Hello and welcome to your Leavenworth City Commission meeting. Please silence or turn off your phones during the meeting. Just a reminder that meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing at YouTube. If we could all stand now for our Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I will be filling in tonight for Mayor Martin. So first things up is proclamation, so I'll come on down. Okay, the first proclamation I have tonight is Arbor Day, so we'll get started. City of Leavenworth, Kansas proclamation. Whereas in 1872 Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and whereas this holiday called for Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and in the world and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life giving oxygen and provide habit for wildlife and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving a paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products and whereas trees in the city of Leavenworth, Kansas increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. Now, whereas, sorry I said that. Whereas now for I Holly Pittman, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim April 26, 2024 to be Arbor Day and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to plant, to be, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future promotions. In witness whereof, I set my hand and have affixed the great seal of the city of Leavenworth, Kansas this 23rd day of April in the year 2024. Yay Arbor Day!
Speech, speech, talk about trees.
All right, perfect. So this year's Arbor Day is going to be in Landing Park. We're going to do it in honor of Marcelle Williams. She was a longtime Parks and Rec employee and it's Friday, April 26th at 1:30 PM. So come down and join us for Arbor's Day.
Are you planting trees?
We will, we will be planting a red bud.
Oh, yay!
So close to the flagpole.
Yay, okay, thank you.
All right, National Small Business Week, is that you Haley and Scott? Or just Haley? Just Haley, okay. Scott just gave me the side eye.
I have trust for the occasion.
Okay. So the next proclamation is National Small Business Week. Whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise and whereas small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and a passion for what they do and whereas when we support small business, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture and whereas because this country's 28 million small businesses create nearly two out of the three jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. And whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs throughout the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies and whereas the city of Leavenworth, Kansas supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their business, create jobs and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. And whereas the Leavenworth Main Street program has been in existence since 1995 personally supporting and growing downtown small businesses and entrepreneurs within the community and specifically within the 28 blocks of the first city of Kansas. Now therefore I Holly Pittman, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim April 28th through May 4th to be National Small Business Week. Yay! And here I have Haley Shaw to talk about small businesses and Main Street.
Well, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the city of Leavenworth and also the city commissioners for recognizing Leavenworth Main Street as an organization, a nonprofit organization that supports small business in our beloved town. So I am the new Main Street Director. I have been with the organization for about a month now and just wanted to share that we have a lot of plans for moving forward and there's a great opportunity to support downtown, so thank you. I could talk a little bit about some of the upcoming events. So on May 2nd, we have Cinco and the Symphonies. So Leavenworth Arts has recently moved into our building and we are, I am personally very passionate about arts and business. So we are partnering with Leavenworth Arts to bring the Kansas City Symphony's musical, mobile musical box to Haymarket Square during Cinco and the Symphony, followed by an event we have coming up on May 11th, which is our Build a Bouquet event and also the opening of City Market.
Yay, thank you. Definitely a great time to see the symphony, it doesn't come here much, so. Leavenworth Historic Preservation Month. Yay, Mr. Jackson. Okay. The next proclamation is whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life and all ethnic backgrounds and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people and whereas People Saving Places is a national campaign co-sponsored by the Leavenworth Preservation Commission, Preservation Alliance of Leavenworth, Leavenworth Main Street and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore I Holly Pittman, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim May 2024 as Leavenworth Historical Preservation Month. Woo, yay! Feature time. All right, I love you.
Good evening, everyone. Accompanying me as always is Mr. Ed Otto, making sure I do what I'm supposed to do when I'm up there doing it. On behalf of everybody else that's a member of the Preservation Commission, we'd like to thank you for entrusting us with the responsibility that goes in trying to make sure that people comply with the, are consistent with what we present in beautiful downtown Leavenworth. We are the first city of Kansas and we take the responsibilities that you have empowered us with, with the humbleness that encourages us to get up and just look around our city and just trying to find ways to make sure that we represent all the diversity in our community, but more specifically making sure our downtown is beautiful. All the other organizations, specifically Main Street and the people that collaborate with us, we'd just like to say thank you and welcome onboard. We're going to be doing lots of good things with you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next up is National Drinking Water Week. Yay! How are you? All right, whereas water is our most valuable and important natural resource, playing a vital role in our daily lives and the water produced by the Leavenworth Water Department is the most reliable and the best tasting water in all of Leavenworth County. Whereas a safe, reliable water supply is critical to the success of our community, it creates jobs, attracts industry and investment and provides for the health and welfare of citizens in the ways ranging from disease prevention to fire suppression and quality of life we enjoy and whereas we often take water supply for granted until it's threatened, either by drought, water main breaks or some other event, any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity and public safety are in some ways related to the access to safe water. And whereas we are all stewards of the water supply and infrastructure upon which future generations depend and whereas each citizen of the city of Leavenworth is called upon to protect our source waters from pollution to practice responsible water conservation to get involved in local water issues and whereas therefore I Holly Pittman, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim May 5th through 11th, 2024 as National Drinking Water Week. Yay!
Passing out water bottles?
I will say we have really good water, really tasty water, so if anybody can say first.
It's red, you can't live without it.
Okay, last one. Provider Appreciation Day? Anybody? Yeah, oh there's it.
Oh yeah, that's what's up.
Come on up, how are you? Okay. Whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day and whereas childcare providers provide a safe nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of children nationwide and is a vital force in our economy and whereas the pandemic illuminated how indispensable childcare providers are for the well-being and economic security of Kansas's young children, families and communities. Whereas childcare programs, which are mostly small businesses, run and staff predominantly by women, continue to recover from health and financial hardships stemming from the pandemic while they have continued to meet the needs of families. And whereas Kansas recognizes that childcare has been and continues to be a lifeline for families, communities and the economy. As such, it has provided much-needed support to providers to help sustain the viability of childcare and whereas the future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore I Holly Pittman, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim May 10th, 2024 to be Provider Appreciation Day. Yay! I guess we're too, um, composing about how important childcare is.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am. Well, we just want to say thank you for this wonderful proclamation. We consider it an honor to serve the children from 12 months and walking all the way to age five. We believe that they are the greatest in the kingdom. We believe that when we plant the seeds of education in them and not just education, but also we plant the word of God on the inside of them, that they will leave us and they will go on to do great things. And so thank you, thank you again.
Was that a record for proclamations? I think I said it. That's awesome. Okay, first up business is consideration of previous minute meetings. Minutes from the April 9th, 2024 regular meeting.
Madam Mayor, move to approve minutes from April 9th, 2024 regular meeting.
Second. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. Four to zero. All right, next up is second consideration ordinances. The second consideration ordinance number 8241, rescinding certain special use permits.
Yes ma'am, this is before the commission denied for second reading. Very briefly, there are two special use permits that are at locations that are no longer in operation. 235 Marion Street was an auto salvage or junkyard that's closed and 2715 Old Creed Court was a childcare center that is no longer in operation. And so this is matters before you for second consideration. There have been no changes since first reading and it's ready to proceed.
Anyone, any commissioners have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, we'll start again with a roll call vote. Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson? Holly Pittman, Mayor Pro Tem, a vote, yes. All right.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes four to zero. Okay.
Actually, it's not a motion, but that's a.
Oh, sorry. It passed four to zero. All right, new business, do we have any public comment? We do, Sharon Whistler.
I just wanted to bring to your attention that there's a dangerous intersection at Second and Pine. There is a construction company that parks all of their vehicles, or most of them, along both sides of the street and you have to pull out dangerously far to be able to see to go left. And I'd like to see that be a four-way stop, it'd make it a lot safer.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Second and Pine.
All right, General Items. Number four, first up, 2024-25 City Commission Goals.
Yes ma'am, this item will be handled by our city manager, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem and Commissioner. The city commission gathered on Friday, March 22nd to do the annual goal-setting session. This year, there were fewer changes than in years past, I think that's, that's good. We completed six goals, partnership with three brothers and big sisters, replacing the fire department records management system, streamlining reservation and registration payment processes with the city, a slew of finance policies. I thank the commission for their patience as we went through all of those. I think it makes us a stronger organization and thank Roberta and her team for getting those done. Removed a goal about the login portal for document access with commissioners and we did change the quarterly updates and moved USD 453 and LCDC to semi-annual. Added or edited implementing and tracking reporting of the progress for RIV. Moved to from implementing to tracking and reporting progress of RIV. Added pursuant to safety improvements for motors and pedestrians to roadways and infrastructure section. That'll be captured with the Vision Zero Plan, with the intersection improvements at 10th and Limit, a lot of the sidewalk and ADA improvements that we're doing, so I think it's a good place to capture those, those projects. And then added pursuing grant funding for projects and operational elements at Sherman Army Airfield. There's quite a bit of capital improvements that need to happen up there that would, that are the responsibility of the city. So Penny and Brian have been successful and instrumental in getting state grants and more active, so just to keep that in front of the commission. If we want to continue to operate that airfield, it's going to require some capital investment and the more grants that we can get, less of that burden will fall to the citizens. So that's been really successful. So the items, again, these are not exhaustive of all city efforts. They help guide staff in the budget formulation and staff to continue to provide the commission updates a couple of times a year on the progress of these goals. So they're before you tonight to adopt and then you will, as usual, share them, staff and the community. If there are any questions, let me know, otherwise, there before you.
I think we covered that pretty well.
Any questions? I will ask for motion.
I move that. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I move, I move we approve the 24-25, 2024-2025 City Commission Goals.
Second.
We'll begin voting with Commissioner Hengler.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes four to zero. All right, next up is Leavenworth Attainable Housing Update.
Can I invite Sister Vicky to come up? She in the town? So I'll just give a quick background and then turn it over. In January of 2023, the city commission approved $600,000 in what was then Arbor Funding to develop USA Leavenworth Attainable Housing or homeless transitional housing in the city. At that meeting, the representatives outlined a couple of different uses, construction of duplexes, land acquisition, purchase of four homes and rehab of four homes. The group has been very active over the last 15 months and as you're active for that amount of time, you start to get a better feel about market conditions, what's the building climate looking like, what's the rehab, what's the inventory? And so as they worked through those, they saw maybe some opportunities within these categories to maybe switch up a little bit of where some of the funding is going there, not asking for a penny more from the city. And really the changes would probably be allowed, but Sister Vicky did want to come and get the commission's blessing and give you an update on some of the projects that are going on, so I'm going to turn it over to Sister Vicky.
Thanks, Paul. This is the state's Housing Summit Week and so Sister Amy is at the Housing Summit, so tonight you get the retired old nun as a substitute. What we'd like to do is we had set aside $220,000 twice for two different duplexes and then the rest of the money to buy and rehab four houses. We have bought and rehabbed three houses, well, one will be finished in about two weeks. We also have a marvelous opportunity that we didn't think we were going to see for sure, but we have a chance to buy six houses for $75,000, which is amazing. It's somebody who has.
Six houses?
For 75.
Houses, for $75,000.
Where that's at?
That's a deal.
Stick around. It's an unbelievable deal. It's an 83-year-old woman who wants, doesn't want to be a landlord anymore and wants to clear out and she wanted to do it for somebody, give it to somebody or sell it to somebody who would make good use of it. So she approached us and we obviously are very excited about that because we've been trying to buy houses for quite some time and haven't found people that were willing to sell. So we would really, that's why we'd like to start on this. These houses obviously will require a great deal of rehab. None of them is in very good shape, but they're, that's what we do, we rehab houses. And so we think changing this to allow both to do more houses and just do the one duplex would give much more impact to the city. Obviously it'd be a lot of different neighborhoods that we would be impacting and making them look better and be able to house a lot more people than we could with building a second duplex. So that's what we're asking you to do, to approve that flexibility.
Are you going to use a six? Because I know you've done kind of like a roommate situation multiple, are you going to, those going to be single family?
It will, it'll depend on what the need that comes up at that time when they get rehabbed. We have one that we're, one more that we'll be ready to do and we're thinking we're going to do congregate living there, but not positive yet. When it gets finished, we'll see who's ready to move in.
Okay.
So we'd be open to either.
Any questions?
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Yeah, it's a need.
To spread, spread the money out even farther.
Do a lot more.
And be able to make an impact on the neighborhoods.
Right. Again, six houses for $75,000.
I know. I was, we started out thinking we'd offer 100 and then as we kept calling, they, she said, "Just make me an offer." We said, "Okay."
Wow, well, that's great.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
That's what you call a blessing.
That is a blessing.
Yes.
Well, if you don't have any, if you don't have any further questions, I'll, see, I'll entertain a motion, no.
Consensus.
Consensus, so.
Yes.
We all, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So yes to the question.
Thank you very much.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the 2024 A General Obligation Bonds. Oh, sorry, no, excuse me. Consider Cereal Malt Beverage License for Little Bar at 1431 10th Avenue.
Yes ma'am, our city clerk, Sarah Blumstein.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem and Commissioner, before you this evening is a request to approve the cereal malt beverage license for the new owners of the Little Bar located at 1431 10th Avenue. Little Bar has recently been sold. We were here about a month ago to be doing that license, but he has actually entered into a contract for selling it and the new owners would like to keep the operations going and to do so, they would need a cereal malt beverage license. They've submitted the application for the on-premise license and the police department has reviewed and approved the application, so we're here before you tonight requesting approval of the same.
The Little Bar is an amazing place. If you haven't been in there, you should go in there and check it out.
It's a lot bigger than it looks.
Tiny building, it's, looks a lot bigger on the inside and I have to say Mike Malik just passed away. He was, he, I believe, had had that bar for probably 60 years. I know, I grew up in North Leavenworth with him and right after he got out of high school, I think he went to work there and then took over the bar. So it's, it's, it's a fixture in that neighborhood and I think they've always kept it pretty good, pretty good and, you know, not much trouble with the neighborhood, so I'd be happy to continue that.
So does anyone have any questions? Okay, then I'll call for a motion.
I move that we approve the issuance of a 2024 on-premise consumption. Cereal malt beverage license for Little Bar located at 1431 10th Avenue.
Second.
All right, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 All right, motion's passes four to zero. Okay, thank you. Now we're back on 2024 A General Obligation Bonds Insurance Proceedings. First up is the present results of the bond sale that was this morning, right?
Yes ma'am, we'll invite our finance director, Robert Byer, and our bond counsel, Greg Barnberg, to lead us through this process. We'll start off with Roberta and this is related to the funding and construction of Fire Station Number Three.
Hi, how are you?
Hello, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Issue before the city commission today is to consider the proceedings for the general obligation bond series 2024A for the construction, furnishing and equipment, equipping of a new fire station number three. The bond sale was today and Greg Barnberg is here today to tell you about the results of the bond sale and then we will need a motion to accept those proposals and a roll call vote on the second consideration and finally adopt the resolution for the issuance of the bonds. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Greg.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, good evening. Greg Barnberg with Raymond James. We serve as financial advisor, excuse me, financial advisor for the city and helped pull together the sale today, but when you think back to the process that we went through to result in the bond sale that occurred today, it really began with the commission adopting the authorizing resolution. That authorizing resolution gave our firm as financial advisor and Nichols and Wolf as bond counsel or bond attorney for the city permission to start pulling together the documents to conduct the bond sale. From our perspective, the documents consist of the offering memorandum or official statement that's given to investors, but then also working with Roberta and her department on having the bond rating assigned by Moody's. As you may recall from some of the prior sales, the bond rating for the city is very high relative to cities in Kansas and even throughout the country. You are in the double A category and that's quite an accomplishment from a bond rating perspective and it speaks to the management of the city and the financial condition of the city. And that favorable bond rating helps us achieve favorable interest rates, so it helps you save some interest expense when you're financing a project. But from the bond counsel perspective, they, while we were drafting the documents I had referenced, they were working on the resolution and the ordinance that are presented to you this. this evening. And so the last piece of information that we needed to have to bring to you the final results would be the, the interest rates. And this morning at ten o'clock, we conducted the bond sale. Very pleased to report that we had seven bidders. In the handout that I had shared with you on page three, there's a summary of the bids we received. On a typical general obligation bond sale of, of this type and size, we would expect three to five bidders. We had seven bidders, which we're very pleased with that. And it's also interesting to know, we had seven bidders from seven different states. We had Wisconsin, Tennessee, Florida, Texas, Oklahoma, New York, and Missouri. So it's a very nice mix of bidders and an interesting geographic mix. We set up the parameters for the bond sale to notify bidders that whoever submitted the lowest net interest cost, or NIC, would, would earn the right or win the bid to be the underwriter of, of the bond, the general obligation bonds that were issued. When we advertised the sale of the bonds, we had, had set the stated principal amount at, at five million, but we reserved the right to reduce the principal amount if we received a premium bid. So when you look at that, that summary of bids, the average interest rates that we received ranged from three point three-one percent to three point five-seven percent. And each of those bidders offered a premium. Offered a premium as part of their bid to the city, and the premium is, in addition to the stated principal amount of the bond issue, there's a dollar amount of premium that's paid to the city. And when you look at the line item that shows the premium offered, we had premiums ranging anywhere from a hundred and eighty-six thousand to a high of four hundred and thirty-six thousand. Those premiums are also factored into that net interest cost calculation. So the, the winning bidder or the best bid that we received this morning at ten o'clock was from Robert W. Baird. They're out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. They submitted an average interest rate of three point three-one-three percent, and they paid a premium to the city of two hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And so we used that premium to reduce the principal amount of the bond issue. You may notice in the resolution or the ordinance that the new principal amount instead of five million is four million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. That results in, after payment of the financing cost, five million dollars even going into the project fund for the, the fire station project. So we, we have, once we had the bids received, we verified the accuracy of the, the low bidder. We recommend that you select the bid from Robert W. Baird at three point three-one-three percent. And then the other action that you would take this evening would be to adopt the ordinance and the resolution. The resolution and the ordinance both contain information with the final interest rates, the final principal amount, the details of the bond issue. And upon your approval of those documents, that will allow us to complete the closing on May ninth. And so on, on May ninth, the bond certificates will be delivered to Robert W. Baird in exchange for the purchase price that they pay to the city. And once that occurs, the, the bond issue would be closed. So I'll, I'll stop there. Happy to answer any questions, but congratulations on a, a very successful bond sale. And also congratulations on the affirmation of that bond rating that's been in the double A category for quite some time, and the city should be very proud of that.
Good. Good, good, good. So you guys might have helped me through this. So the first thing we need to do is accept the proposals for the general obligation bonds series twenty-two, twenty-four.
A motion for that?
Okay, I'll need a motion for that.
I, I move that we accept the proposals as stated for the general obligation bond series twenty-two, twenty-four A.
Second.
Okay. And I'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingler.
Aye.
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 Motion passes four to zero. And then second consideration ordinance, eighty-two, forty-two, general obligation bond series twenty-two, twenty-four A.
Correct. So we need a roll call vote for that.
Roll call vote for that, okay. So I'll begin the vote with Commissioner Bader.
Aye.
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 Okay. And then we'll need to adopt a resolution, B twenty-three, sixty-seven, issuance of twenty-two, twenty-four A general obligation bonds, and I'll need a motion for that.
Okay. I move we adopt resolution B twenty-three, sixty-seven, issuance of twenty-two, twenty-four A general obligation bonds.
Second.
Okay. I'll begin voting with Commissioner Bader.
Aye.
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 We did it.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
I was a little worried about that one, but we did it. Thank you for your update. That was fantastic, and this is really nice. I can't believe you put this together from ten o'clock this morning. That's great.
Thank you. Appreciate the chance to help you with this, and congratulations on the sale.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is resolution. Resolution B two, twenty-three, sixty-eight, Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Hello.
Yes, ma'am. So will be presented by Julian Keel.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, Commissioners, it's that time of year again where we're having to present an annual action plan to HUD for use of our funds, uh, Community Development Block Grant Funds. The grant year starts July first, two thousand and twenty-four, goes through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. This is the third grant year of the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-six consolidated, consolidated plan. We are working on projected num, fund numbers right now. So we are utilizing the current grant year that we're in's fund numbers of three hundred and forty thousand because they have not been announced to us yet. We've been pretty lucky in the past to know what they were going to be and just receiving the funds late, but hopefully that's the other way around. We'll know late, get the funds early. We're not too far off at all from what we have done in the past as far as the category of the funds of how much we're putting where. Using projected funds, it's going to be spent pro rata when we know the exact amount, you know, equally proportionate or disproportionate for each category. Public service agencies are always going to be maxed out at fifteen percent of the entitled grants. We're always going to make sure that we give as much as we possibly can. Those that have been approved for CDPG funds for this coming year is St. Vincent Clinic, Leavenworth Interfaith Community of Hope, Leavenworth Mission, the Alliance Against Family Violence, Catholic Charities, and CASA. And the Community Development Advisory Board has voted upon how much they are going to receive as well. And again, it would be equally disproportionate disproportionate when we find out what our exact number, figures are going to be. Housing programs are going to be approximately ninety thousand so that we have funds for home repair, home accessibility, and home ownership, and neighborhood stabilization. Did put a little bit less in demos this year and a little bit more towards infrastructure as I'm working closely with Director of Public Works to make sure that we have some good infrastructure projects continuously going and spending those funds. The citizen participation was completed, making sure that we have the two hearings, February twelfth and April eighth. This annual action plan in this draft form was presented in Community Development Advisory Board where they approved it after asking any questions that they had. And is there any questions I could answer for you?
Yeah, can, can CDPG funds be used to build things like ramps on houses?
Yes, absolutely. We have a home accessibility program.
I get questions about that every once in a while, and I have, have referred them, but I just wanted to double check and to say this to the public that that is an option.
Absolutely. So we have an, and we have it open so that if somebody is actually renting a home, they could actually qual, they could qualify possibly for a ramp to be put on that home, right?
I thought it would just sooner occupied.
No, that's for home repair, but if somebody has accessibility needs, we can do that.
Okay.
There's clearly no lien would go into place for that. There's a lot of other provisions, and most certainly with confirmed and, and writing with the policies we have in place, the homeowner would have to be approving of those things. I have found more often than not, that doesn't usually end up happening because usually the homeowner slash landlord ends up finding out they're applying for the program, and by the time it gets to there, they're taking care of it themselves. But it is available, and I actually do have somebody that we're working on, on that right now.
Good, thank you.
When will you know if you're getting this three hundred and forty thousand?
Yeah, we just don't know.
Oh, okay.
Right? Congress has to finish their part.
Okay.
Well, HUD is in their sixty-day period right now, where they may possibly, at, by the end of that, they should be able to, to tell us. So the plan is they'll be able to let us know and we can, I can update these figures and hit submit, of course, after your approval, and hopefully that happens before the grant year starts.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, you mentioned citizen participation. You had two hearings.
Mm-hmm.
How many citizens?
None.
That's what I thought, none. Zero citizen participation.
Yes. And we do advertise, I'm certainly open to hearing, um, any advice anybody may have, we certainly have-
I find no fault with you.
Mm-hmm. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I just wanted to assure you, we're doing everything we can to get that information out there and, of course, documenting that and-
Sure. This is the third year of the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-six plan. So we don't use a rolling plan kind of thing that, so that it's always a five-year plan. You know, for instance, it would be now, it would be, you know, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight plan. We don't do that. So when do we have to develop a new five-year plan? At the end of this?
At the, at the beginning of the two thousand and twenty-seven grant year. We would have to have another five-year plan put in place.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll just take a motion to approve the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
I move to adopt the attached resolution adopting and authorizing the submission of the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five annual action plan to HUD.
Second.
All right, thank you. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingler.
Aye.
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 All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next resolution is B twenty-three, sixty-nine, authorizing serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor for Main Street Alive After Five Events.
Our city clerk?
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem and Commissioners, before you this evening is a resolution to authorize the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverages to members of the general public during the Leavenworth Main Street Alive After Five Events held in two thousand and twenty-four. This is a revision of the one that we passed in November. City staff was contacted by Leavenworth Main Street regarding the previously approved resolution and that the state alcohol beverage control kind of had a new interpretation of the language. So they had requested a revision to better fit the events that they are putting on. So staff worked with our city attorney and also submitted the draft resolution to the state to make sure that they met their new interpretation so that we could pass that for Leavenworth Main Street so they can continue their Alive After Five events for the rest of the year. Mr. Scott O'Neal is here, along with Haley Shaw from Leavenworth Main Street. Obviously, Mr. David Waters, our city attorney, is here if you have any questions. But tonight before you is approval of that resolution so they can continue doing what they do.
So what happened?
Motion, question.
Yes.
There are lots of, there are several different ways in which, let me even start a little bit further back. Kansas liquor laws are a maze and a twisted one at that. There are several paths by which alcohol may be served without licensing. Those can include service of complimentary beverages at, for private businesses with their guests. That is something that Main Street may fall under in certain circumstances. There are circumstances for fundraising activities for five-oh-one C-threes. That is another one that they fall under. And neither of those require city support. There's another one that allows five-oh-one C-three type organizations to hold events for the promotion of the arts with a city resolution. The state's interpretation was that the current ordinance, that resolution we had did not have the promotion of the arts type language in it, so they wanted some clarity on that. What we've done with this resolution is essentially outline all the different paths that might be available on some of them, leaving it up to Main Street to determine which one would these events. Is this a, a business-serving one? Is this a fundraising one? Or is this a promotion of the arts event? Let them work that out with ABC as to the events, but in any case, at least we've got a resolution of the city authorizing that to the extent it is for the promotion of the arts. You are authorizing it, and you don't have to come back to the city every time.
Okay.
Is that a fair description?
No, that's exactly fair. What, what happened was we did not realize that we had to submit that every time that we did an Alive After Five. So when we submitted that, I guess apparently the afternoon before the event happened, someone had called and complained saying that we were not in compliance for the event that had never started yet. So that put me into contact with Sarah to find out, running around, trying to figure out what we need to do. ABC then told us that you either, if the five-oh-one C-three wanted to serve the alcohol on premise, we would not need a resolution, that would be fine. But if we wanted to each individual shop, then it'd have to be fall underneath the arts. So I asked them for clarification on what they consider arts, because, you know, a lot of our shops are retail shops, some of them do their own, you know, products and so forth, because I wanted that clarification of what they consider the arts, so that way there was no gray area or misunderstanding. They said there was none.
There's no gray area. The term is not defined.
Yeah, so, so they said that the arts can be the way they do their shopping, whatever. So that's where we, we made the adjustment so that way we're in, within the laws and none of the shop owners have to have any issues with that.
Yeah, but essentially it boils down to, it could be more of that language promotion of the arts in the resolution.
Yeah.
Any questions?
The statutory citation was not an art.
Got to follow the rules.
That's right.
No.
Any?
No.
Okay.
I move that we approve resolution B twenty-three, sixty-nine as presented.
Second.
All right. We begin voting with Commissioner Bader.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right. Number bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider approval of executive search firm services.
Yes, ma'am. Our personnel director, Lana Lantner, will lead this discussion.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, Commissioners, sadly presented for you this evening is your review and approval of the selection of a search firm, firm for the recruitment of our next city manager. Staff prepared an RFP on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the submission deadline was set for April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, with a total of six proposals that were received by that deadline. In doing a review of those six proposals, the criteria that was identified within the RFP, the six that are identified within the policy report, were used to analyze all six of those proposals. Primary consideration given, obviously, to the ability of them to recruit a city manager level position, the timeframe that they are required to complete the process from start to finish, qualification and the experience of the proposed firm, as well as the service in the Kansas City area. So after reviewing those criteria against all six of the proposals that were received, there were two that were identified as very comparable, one being CPS, HR consulting, and the other strategic government resources, SGR. So the comparison between those two are highlighted in the policy report. SGR. So, the comparison between those two are highlighted in the policy report. The main differences between the two is SGR does have more recent, as well as just more in general, Kansas searches for city manager level positions. So, that was a big difference between the two firms. The approach that both of them follow, the search process itself, was very similar between the two of them. The timeframes between the two were very similar with SGR providing a little bit shorter timeframe of completion of the project with twelve to fourteen weeks versus CPS fourteen to sixteen weeks. Both of them do the same background check as far as media searches and doing the final, in addition to the media searches, the financial background, history, criminal history, et cetera. So, all of those are similar between the two of them as well. Fee structure for both of them were also similar with a three-tier payment plan at the end of each of the phases, and SGR came in roughly about $1,100 under the CPS quote. So, with that being the difference, kind of the deciding factor between the executive searches that they have completed in the Kansas City area, as well as the lower fee, SGR is being recommended for consideration of entering into a contract with, for the executive search firm services and requesting that you approve or authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with SGR to enter into these services. At which point, once that is done, the first step in the process is interview process and consultation with the commission members to start the process of selecting candidate recruitment material, position analysis, what your qualifications are, what your experience level, what you're looking for in your next city manager to develop the recruitment brochure.
Okay.
Can I answer any questions?
And the budget impact is $28,900.
Correct.
Okay. Make sure that's clear.
And this will still be a national search?
Pretty straightforward.
Well, yeah, I like the idea of having a firm that's had more experience in Kansas than would, or in the Midwest, anyway. That would be a good one.
SGR currently has three, I believe, three executive searches going on right now in the Kansas area. They've just completed another four within the last two years as well.
Does SGR meet with us as a commission?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
So, they have a varied approach, and you would set the criteria for what that approach is. But a lot of it is individual contact to set the criteria and the guidelines for what you're looking for, combine all of that into one document to present the recruitment brochure for final before it's posted as recruitment last.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, if no more questions, I'll consider approval of the executive search firm. I'll take a motion.
Yeah, I move that, well, we use SGR firm for our search firm, not to, with a consulting fee not to exceed $28,900.
Second.
All right, I'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingla.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, consider award of bid for municipal service center building partial remodel.
Yes, ma'am. Our Director of Public Works, Brian Faust, will present this item.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, pro tem, commissioners. State of the item this evening is to consider approval of a construction contract with BKM for $119,202 for a partial remodel of our municipal service center. The service center is in need of several repairs and additional secure office spaces. The upgrades do include removing five old outdated block cubicles and replacing with seven offices with metal studs, insulated sheet rock, fire-rated doors, upgraded electrical and computer wiring. It also includes finishing out a large area of acoustical drop ceiling and additional painting of the inside of the building. The front entrance will continue to be welcoming to citizens, but at the same time to keep our administrative assistants safe and secure. There will be four entrance doors coming into the office area that will have access control. The bids for the remodel were opened on Wednesday, March 27th. The low bid for both the center office remodel and repainting was submitted by BKM. And while BKM's bid was a little bit higher for the acoustical ceiling, there is benefit of dealing with only one contractor and one contractor who is able to work. The total bid for the offices, paint and ceiling from BKM was $119,202. The Basil's bid was $195,733. No bids were received for the bathroom remodel. And only been, one bid was received for the floor repair. The cost for the floor repair, as you can see, is cost prohibitive, so we will reevaluate that in the future.
Okay.
The 2024 CIP includes funding in the amount of $120,000 for the remodeling. The cost for the remodel without the bathroom and floor is $119,202, which is just about $800 less than what's in CIP. Staff does recommend the city commission approve the bid by BKM Construction for the remodel of the Municipal Service Center. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You don't like those old cubicles? I don't know how you get any work done.
Yeah.
It's hard to have a private conversation in the open cubicle.
I know, right, right. I think it's good, security-wise and everything is good, it's good.
So, no bathroom, no?
You just want to remodel it.
Okay.
Remodel the front area with all the cubicles, yeah. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, it is.
It's under budget for the CIP.
Any more questions?
Yeah, what did they want to do to the floor for $110,000?
Horrible.
Did they want to like-
That'll see, that'll see what we were anticipating. We didn't ask them to sell the notes.
That's good.
And that sounds like they wanted to tear out the concrete that makes the floor and repour.
That surprised us, the number.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a lot of money.
Well, let's do what we can.
I'll take a motion then. You want to make that motion, Commissioner Bowder?
I move approve the bid by BKM Construction for the remodel of Municipal Service Center not to exceed $119,202.
Second.
All right, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Motion passed. First consideration ordinance to rezone 707 Pawnee from OBD to R16.
Yes, ma'am. This item will be presented by Drew McGurley, our Director of Planning and Development.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, pro tem, and commissioners. As you said, this is a request to rezone the property at 707 Pawnee from OBD, which is Office Business District, to R16, which is high-density, single-family residential. The property is currently occupied by a single-family home. It was previously damaged by fire and remodeled, and the owner is looking to sell it. Since it's owned Office Business District, single-family homes are not allowed use in that district. It's considered an existing non-conforming use, so there's no action that the city is taking to require it to be rezoned. We've had a few of these come up lately. Something has changed with the lending and insurance laws in recent years that most of them are requiring properties be conforming to local regulations in order to be financed or insured. And so, we've had a few of these requests come up for these existing non-conforming uses that we allow to continue as they are, but folks are just needing to rezon them so that they're conforming so that they can be sold. So, that's the purpose of the rezoning request. The planning commission did consider this item at their April 1st meeting and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the request. We did send a notification of property under 200 feet as is required by Kansas statute. We had one question, kind of what was the rezoning being requested for, but there were no comments or concerns after we sent those notices. So, staff would also recommend approval of the request based on the findings included in your policy report, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
Now, we've had three or four of these in the past six months.
Yep, we've had a number of these.
Yeah, and we've approved every one of them, I think.
Okay.
No, I have any questions?
Need a consensus then?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next one is first consideration ordinance for special use permit for a college or university, St. Mary's.
Yes, St. Mary's. Yes. So, as you said, this is a special use permit request to allow a college or university in the R19 zoning district. As you said, it is for University of St. Mary's. Obviously, University of St. Mary's has been there for quite some time. It was established on the site in 1923. When zoning was first put in place in the city in the 1960s and our development regulations were first established at that time, the college was already in place. And I can't speak to how zoning was applied in the 60s, but-
You can't?
That's what it was, that's what was put in place. So, the current development regulations do require that a college or university have a special use permit to operate in an R19 zoning district. So, this is another case where it's an existing non-conforming use. They would be allowed to continue. What has prompted the special use permit at this point is the university is looking to add a new dorm on their property and a new parking lot, obviously expanding their offerings to students and so they can keep growing. So, the fact that there was never a special use permit issued with any of their past growth in the past, you know, fifty, sixty years is likely just an oversight, just due to the longstanding tenure of the university on the site. So, when they came in and started talking to us about the dorm, we discussed, we just need to get this cleaned up, get the special use permit issued. So, now, as they go forward and hopefully continue to grow and have new development on the site for the university, they will be in total conformance with our development regulations and will not need to go through this again with any further building. So, any building permits would need to be reviewed, of course, and approved, but no other further action on the land use side of things. So, again, the planning commission did consider this at their April 1st meeting and voted five to zero to recommend approval. We did send out notifications to properties within 200 feet as required by statute and had no questions or complaints. So, staff would recommend approval based on the findings included in your report, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
No.
None.
That's easy.
All right, easy consensus, yes?
You couldn't say no.
Yes.
Yes.
I think they should be allowed-
Wouldn't dare say no.
To the university.
Sister Diane would be down here.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, consent agenda. Commissioner Hingla.
I make a move that we approve claims for April 5th, 2024 through April 18th, 2024, in the amount of $1,263,299.15. Net amount for payroll number seven, effective April 5th, 2024, in the amount of $393,466.23. No police will fire pension.
Second.
All right, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes four to zero. Okay, we'll mix up as we'll go around the room. Right? Okay.
Paul, do you have any?
Anything, Chief?
No, ma'am.
No, nothing?
Now, Paul, okay, sorry.
I do, if you'll indulge me a minute. So, I just wanted to say, I'll have the opportunity to say a few things about my employees on Friday. So, I wanted to close my last of roughly 550 Leavenworth City Commission meetings-
Wow.
-with a few words mainly for the commission, this commission and those who have held the seats over the last fifteen years. Simply put, I want to convey my gratitude. That gratitude extends to have you have treated me and my family, how you've supported and sacrificed for the city, and how you've worked side by side with me over these years. I am overwhelmingly grateful for the opportunity to have served as the Leavenworth City Manager and to have been a part of the city of Leavenworth for more than fourteen years. If I could leave you with two thoughts, they would be to thank big and continue to be persistent. Big doesn't have to mean expensive. In fact, it generally means creative or strategic, but it almost always requires thinking outside the box and then making an investment in the future. No idea is too far-fetched to consider. Those big ideas have meant taking city blocks and redeveloping them, stepping in when a project just didn't work for the private sector, expanding our knowledge of the tools needed for redevelopment and employing them, investing triple the original budget in Stubby Park because we knew it would work and people would come. And it did, and they do, in incredible numbers. It meant to build a splash pad, to build a dedicated pickleball court, to create a new city festival, to support mental health, to support tenants and landlords, to bring transit to Leavenworth County. All these ideas went beyond normal city services, and each has enriched Leavenworth. They are the result of thinking big. Second, I am proud that this commission and every commissioner I've worked for has valued persistence. We didn't let up on the 35th ID Regional Readiness Center, which went from planned to being in peril to being built. The same goes for the years of effort that went into playing our part to ensure the new federal prison under construction now was done in Leavenworth. And persistence will mean the eventual reuse of the current USP site to something equally as impactful. This commission has always supported doing what it takes to achieve the goals, no matter how long or how hard it takes. That commitment played a part in the Centennial Bridge replacement and the Business and Technology Park, which will be filled and will make an impact in the north half of this county sooner rather than later, and in the Countywide Transportation Plan. Nothing is ever done by one entity or one group, but I believe in the role the city has played while I've been here. Many of the things I've worked towards over the last few years will happen after I'm gone, and that's just how it goes. But I have never focused on when a project would be done, but rather what, was I doing what was required on this day, or this week, or this month to keep them moving toward being done one day? That's the nature of holding a seat like this and a seat like yours. I know I said I only had two thoughts, but I want to sneak a third one in. This commission has always been supportive of investing in employees. This pays off over time. It creates a stronger culture and is the only way to ensure consistent service delivery. I have no reason to think that would change, but I wanted to mention it. Finally, no city manager could give a greater compliment than to say that in eight and a half years, I have never felt a lack of support, encouragement, or confidence from my city commission. I learned, gained invaluable experience, and made a few friends along the way, and I sincerely
Light the tears.
Yes, it's getting hot in here.
We're gonna miss you.
We're gonna miss you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you for, don't do that, you're gonna make me do it.
I know, I know. Well, do you have anything to say? I'll start here.
Okay, sure. Paul, thanks. We're gonna miss you. And while, is she still here? Yeah, while Lorna was sitting here, I was thinking, okay, I only have one criteria, well, one first criteria for the company we just agreed to hire for the search firm. Get me one of those.
Clone.
Yeah. If we can clone you, that's great. And yes, I will make sure my daughter knows who you are.
Does she live in?
Yeah, I just want to say, man, thank you, Paul, from the bottom of my heart. I learned a lot from you. You're a great leader, and I definitely consider you a friend. I appreciate everything that you've done for our community and for the commission as well. So, God bless you and your family, and I wish you the best. Congratulations.
Well, we saw what you could do when you were Assistant City Manager, and it's been one of the best things that I've done, is worked with the commission that hired you. And we are gonna miss you. Thank you.
I agree. I kind of take it personally. I come on board and you leave, but it's been great working with you since December, and I love that. Think big. I think that needs to be on a T-shirt to thank you for all your service and all you've done for Leavenworth. Appreciate it. So, with that-
I still have one more thing. I want to change the subject a little, but I wanted to, all of us to-
Absolutely.
Give him his due before he leaves.
Let's get one more round of applause.
I just, I have to make a few comments about the library board. I did not say anything before, but I was thinking a lot of things when I was here, and I didn't see any reason to say anything at that time. The library board members serve a four-year term. Lisa Weekly served as mayor on the library, as mayor. All of us that have been mayor have served on the library board. I've served twice. I wish that Mayor Martin could be here tonight, I could ask him what his thoughts were on the, you know, serving on the board of our board of the library, since the mayor serves on the board for one year. Anyway, I started to say Lisa Weekly served as mayor on the library board more than once, and then she applied to serve for four years after that. Mike Griswold served as mayor, and he applied to continue to serve for four years as well. I served on this board twice when I was mayor, and I may apply to do so again someday when I'm no longer on the commission, if there's still a library. And Mayor Martin, like I said before, serves on the library board right now. There are others on the board, are Democrats and Republicans. I have nominated both to be on the board. Not everybody I nominated was accepted, but all that are on there are dedicated to providing, keeping our library for the benefit of the community. At the last meeting, I didn't, I did receive a few phone calls in support of Melissa Davis and Becky Kellogg, as they were, had served the last four years, and they were wanting to serve another four years. And I had, like I said, I had several emails in support of these two, and I had a few who supported Mr. Overby. But one email that struck me, Mr. Overby sent me an email, Commissioner Bauer, that's how he spelled my name. "I wish to be appointed to the library board and need your support. I'm looking to get more familiar with the internal workings of the board so that when I get on the city commission, I can speak about the tax issue with some history behind it. Your support is greatly appreciated. You know my heart is in the right place, and I want to do what's right for the city." If he's gonna be on the commission, he won't be serving for four years. And when I read that, that's when I decided that I was gonna vote against him, because I want people on that board who are dedicated to the board, who are dedicated to the projects and the programs that the Leavenworth Public Library supplies to our community and the people who live here. So, all I can say to that is I would support Mrs. Kellogg and Mrs. Davis continuing on the board, and that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. All right, with that, I call for adjournment of the meeting.
Still moved. Second.
Second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.